Watching online, the city of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of the region, the Wadjuk people of the Nungar nation and their continuing connection to the land, water, their culture and community, and will pay respects to their elders past, present and their descendants. Item two is the disclaimer. The terms and conditions of entry into this meeting are posted on the door as you enter. Please ensure that you have read them prior to attending the meeting and abide by them. Item three, attendance and apologies. Councillor Knight is on approved leave of absence. Earlier today, I approved the electronic attendance of councillor Singh in accordance with the policy, and I further received two requests to attend electronically outside the policy from councillor Richardson and Pradovnik. And it is up to council to decide if they can attend, providing they have completed the appropriate request form. Cathy, have we received, excuse me Cathy, have we received any forms from either councillor Richardson or Pradovnik?
Only Pradovnik.
Only councillor Pradovnik. So it's up to council to decide, so I'll be looking for a motion if you wish to accept councillor Pradovnik attending the meeting electronically. Move councillor McCulloch?
Question first.
Councillor...
Why is a special form needed? Where is that in the meeting procedures?
What are you saying, a special form?
Well, we have to fill in this form, but I don't see that such a request is required by law or any kind of law.
According to our policy, I can approve the tenences if I receive the application before midday today. I received one this morning from councillor Singh, which I approved sometime between four and five o'clock this afternoon. I received a request from councillor Pradovnik and councillor Richardson to attend a meeting electronically, advised them I couldn't approve it under the policy, but I could put it to council for them to approve if they so wish to do so.
Yeah, but I think the point is this policy is not law. It's up to a councillor to decide if they want to attend electronically, they don't need to indicate in any special form, there's no law that requires that, there's no meeting procedures, local law, there's no regulation, there's nothing. If a councillor wishes to attend electronically, they just need to say so.
We have a policy councillor Johnson, and I'm working in accordance with the policy.
Well, that's the point, is the policy doesn't apply. It doesn't apply to a council meeting, so if a councillor has indicated in any way, shape or form that they wish to attend electronically, that's the law.
Mr CEO?
Thank you, I'm just looking for the relevant section to attend by electronic means.
Can I ask a question?
Well, can we do it one question at a time, please councillor Catalano?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, have I answered the query for you?
Thank you, Mr CEO.
Obviously, policy applies to, it's a council adopted policy, therefore it applies to all. The meeting is chaired and ruled by the presiding member in accordance with the standing orders. You make the rulings. If you choose to adhere to the policy as the direct guidance, that's your choice. So in conducting this meeting, if you have said that a councillor who hasn't completed the form in accordance with the policy requires a decision of council, then it's your decision.
Thank you.
Don't think, question, I don't understand that, that doesn't make sense, that's not how meeting procedures, local law works.
Well, in any event councillor Johnson, I've received one form from one councillor, I'm going to put it to this council whether you accept them attending this meeting or not. Councillor Catalano, you had a further question?
Oh yeah, thank you, where's this form found?
You request the form and the staff send it to you.
Who do you request the form from?
Oh, any of the councils.
No, sorry, I mean, it just hasn't been explained to me, I mean, that's why I'm asking the questions, so I can make a note of it.
Going to the chair, in accordance with the council's policy, it's the executive sports staff who provide you through the governance officer, but that's been in force for over a long time.
You request a form from the meetings, council meetings, or from...?
Through the chair, through one of the governance staff, so you could come back to Ms Helen Harrison or to Ms Cameron and seek to get a form to attend by electronic means. There's a checklist on it which you'd fill in and then send it back here.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, where does it say in the meeting procedures, local law, or in the regulation that brought in electronic voting, that that's required? My understanding is a councillor just needs to say that they want to attend electronically, they don't need to fill in a special form, there's no need for a vote.
And in accordance with the policy councillor Johnson.
Yeah, but the policy doesn't apply, it's just a policy, it's only law that applies here.
Well, we have policy, I'm upholding the council policy. So have we received the form from councillor Pradovnik and none from councillor Richardson? So it's up to council. I had a mover in councillor McCulloch to allow councillor Pradovnik to attend electronically, will you second it councillor, second it? Is there anyone against? You wish to debate it councillor Howlett?
No, thank you.
Question?
Question councillor Bowman?
Was there a reason why I couldn't adhere to the council policy of getting in by 12 o'clock, was there a reason provided?
Yes, I had a lengthy email and texting conversation with councillor Pradovnik, she stated she's been unwell for a couple of days, she thought she was getting better earlier today, but this afternoon she's come down with a lot worse condition, and it was sometime after four o'clock she contacted me. I advised her then that she didn't accord with the policy and that I couldn't allow her to attend. I said I'd put it to the council. So I've got a mover and a second, you don't wish to speak against it councillor Howlett?
Well, I will speak to that, yes.
Councillor McCulloch is the mover of the motion, you've got a right to speak, thank you.
I will reserve my right, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Parry is the seconder?
I think it's just fair that if someone's sick, I don't want them in the chamber so that they can do it electronically, that's fine by me.
Thank you, councillor Howlett speaking against?
I think if we're going to be following a policy strictly, then I think we should follow the policy strictly, and if the rule is to be submitted by midday, if you haven't done so, then I suggest you miss out when you're in absent.
Thank you, in my view we are sticking with the policy, council can override my decision not to allow them. Any other speakers for or against? You're speaking for or against councillor?
Yeah, I'm speaking for. Look councillors, the law that applies in this chamber is the law of the land and the regulations about electronic voting and the meeting procedures, local law. The meeting procedures, local law, and the regulations do not prescribe a form, and it is not required that a councillor fill in a form. I'm concerned here that the form is not relevant, I'm happy, I think it's appropriate that councillor Pradovnik attends, but I also think that councillor Tania Richardson would be allowed to attend. I don't think that failing to submit a form means that you can't attend. You've got a right to attend by electronic means, and there should not be barriers that are not required by law placed in your way, and I think we need to get legal advice on this, because it's pretty clear to me that policy does not determine how we proceed here, only the meeting procedures, local law and the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henderson, you're speaking for or against?
For please, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Very simply, circumstances change, policy is just that, it's up to council to vary policy if it needs to, and I think it's only reasonable if circumstances change, if people have an opportunity to contact the mayor and have at least said that they have a reason, it's in the mayor's purview to be able to provide for this, but frankly, I don't particularly like the idea of a piece of paper at noon, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other speakers for or against? Then I'll hand the chair to you councillor Congdon, I'll enter the debate briefly. Councillors, we adopted a policy when we spoke about attending electronically after the state government put in legislation. All I'm doing is abiding by that policy. Councillor Johnson, it's the same form you have put in several times when you have attended electronically, you've got to declare on that form that you're in a secure place using secure equipment and that you've got no impartiality, financial or other interest. So all those who have attended electronically have done, completed that form, that's what I based my decision on. So there's no other speakers. Councillor McCulloch, you have three minutes to write a reply, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillors, we have a lot of rigor in our policies, our local laws, you as the presiding officer have proceeded this way, put it to council, so let's go to a vote.
Thank you, I'll ask those in favour to allow councillor Pradovnik attend electronically to raise your hand. I've councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Congdon, myself, councillor Parry, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor McCulloch and councillor Singh. The only one against was councillor Howlett, the motion is carried, thank you. That now takes us on to item four, declarations of financial proximity interest and interest affecting... Can I just finish this item please councillor? Declarations of financial proximity interest and interest affecting impartiality, are there any councillors or staff? Being none, we'll move on, you have a question councillor Johnson?
Yeah, a question, in accordance with the regulation if councillor Richardson has indicated that she wishes to attend, there is no reason why she, we cannot hold a vote about that as well.
Sorry, you're going to have to speak up, I can't hear you.
Must be the new system, Mr Mayor. Can we also hold a vote then about councillor Richardson as the regulations do not require a form? So if she's sent the necessary information, then that should be sufficient to hold a vote.
Well, I haven't received any information whether she's got any interests or she's in a secure location on a council-approved equipment, and that's according to the policy, we've just voted on that, and we've approved councillor Pradovnik to attend electronically because she has submitted the form.
Yeah, so a question, if the councillor does not have any interest to declare, then in accordance with our practice, she does not have to make a declaration that she has no interest to declare, she simply does not submit a form. And in the case of, if she's not actually, I think you're telling me that she has requested to attend, so therefore that's sufficient, so we should proceed to a vote under the regulations, otherwise we're in breach.
Just give me a moment councillor. Johnson, I'm just looking for the email.
What it says here, in deciding whether to authorise a member to attend a meeting by electronic means, the mayor, president or council must have regard to the location from which the member intends to attend the meeting, and the equipment that the member intends to use to attend the meeting are suitable for the member to be able to effectively engage in deliberations and communication, there's no requirement for a form. So if councillor Richardson has communicated along those lines, then we don't even need a vote, she's entitled to attend, and if we're actively preventing her, then we're in breach of the regulations and in breach of the Local Government Act.
Well, not actively preventing her councillor Johnson.
By not connecting her up, if she's wanting one, we are in breach.
Kathy, is councillor Richardson online or not? So she hasn't logged into the meeting?
Yeah, but nevertheless, I'd like to move a motion that we allow councillor Richardson to attend, whether she's in a queue wishing to attend or not is not relevant, in my view. She may connect later, so I suggest we make a decision. So in accordance, so I want to move a motion that in accordance with the Local Government Administration Regulations, I would say it was, I think it's section 12, that we allow councillor Richardson to attend.
Well, I'm going to, thank you, I've got a mover in a second, I'll take some advice from the governance officer or the CEO as to whether that is valid and whether we can approve her, even though she hasn't completed the appropriate form as per our policy, and the fact that she hasn't even logged in to attend this meeting electronically. You have a question councillor Bowman?
I do, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, getting away from the whole discussion of policy and obviously I own council can go against this own policy, a councillor wanting to or not join the meeting by electronic means who's not in queue or hasn't indicated, would that not be the same as a councillor not being present in the gallery and saying whether they can attend or not, it is a pointless exercise if they are not actually here?
I think it's possible that councillor Richardson may wish to attend later, and that's exactly the same as a councillor physically walking through the door later after the meeting has started. So it's actually, I think, Regulation 14CA of the regulations, that's what governs this, and the councillor just needs to indicate, and it sounds like she has.
Thank you, Miss Hodgkin, can you please provide some advice please?
Through you, the presiding member, councillor Richardson has now entered the meeting, so in light of her entering the meeting, if you want to put it to the vote, then you know she's here.
I will, I've got a motion from councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Catalano, that councillor Richardson be allowed to enter the meeting electronically, is there anyone against? Question councillor Bowman?
In accordance with our policy, we're required to make sure she's in a secure location, has that been provided?
I'm unaware of that, we can ask her if she's online, can you hear us councillor
Councillor Richardson hasn't yet entered the meeting, she has submitted the form, we're sending her the link, she has filled in the form and said that she is in a secure location.
Has she got any interest declared, do you know Megan?
No, she does not. She has marked yes, but has not actually declared anything.
She can declare those in the meeting, can't she?
Have we got her online yet? Well, in the meantime, I've got a motion from councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Catalano, that councillor Richardson can attend the meeting electronically once we hear from her or get her lined up, and then I'll have to ask her if she's got any interests once we get her online. Is there anyone against? You're against councillor Howlett, do you wish to debate it?
No.
Then I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Richardson attending electronically, please raise your hand. I've councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Congdon, myself, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson and councillor Singh, sorry councillor Parry, councillor Parry. Those against were councillor Howlett and councillor McCulloch, the motion is passed, we just have to get them online. Have we got councillor Pradovnik online?
We have this there, it's just taken a while, we're trying to get the image up.
So that motion was passed, which takes us on to item five, public question time, any questions from people in the gallery? There is nil. Item six, deputations, there are nil. Item seven, members' questions, any questions from councillors? No. Item eight, leave of absence, any councillor seeking leave of absence? Being none, we'll move then to part B of the agenda, item 1.1, adoption of the corporate business plan, councillors. You're moving that way councillor Bowman, move councillor Bowman. Seconded councillor Parry, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Thank you, councillor Bowman, you have five minutes to open your debate, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, 12 months ago, I'm not even sure if all councillors knew what I meant when asked about there was, why there was no service... I asked about there was, why there was no service plans provided to councillors. After all, councillors had never been previously provided at Swan.
Point of order.
What's your point of order councillor Johnson?
The councillor's suggesting that councillors didn't know about the concept of a service plan, whereas I can assure him that certainly I did and I think.
You said some councillors may not have been aware. You have no, you may have no point of order, thank you councillor Johnson. Please proceed councillor Bowman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As I pointed out, 12 months ago without serves plans, councillors do not know the cost of providing services. For example, the cost of providing library services. What was the staffing levels? Were there any planned increases?
When, point of order, councillors do know the cost of providing those services, it's an incorrect statement.
Once again councillor Johnson, I rule you have no point of order, thank you. Please continue councillor Bowman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What were the, what was the projects, programmes and plans for the following 12 months and what were the service outputs? We're all not knowing. Fast forward 12 months and we have.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, please councillor Johnson?
We had a budget 12 months ago, we did know these facts. It's, it's, these are incorrect statements, so it needs to be withdrawn.
No councillor Johnson, you have not got a point of order. In fact.
Well, I'll just need to move against your ruling there, Mr Mayor, because it's implying councillor doesn't know what they're doing.
You can do that.
But I'm moving to set aside your ruling because I think it's incorrect.
Thank you. So councillor Johnson is moving a dissent motion against my ruling that he had no point of order and is there a seconder? Your second at councillor Catalano? We put it straight to the vote, Mr CEO. So move councillor Johnson, seconded councillor Catalano, that they dissent against my ruling that councillor Johnson had no point of order. I'll now put it straight to the vote. Councillors in favour, please raise your hand. I have councillor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Parry and councillor Richardson, that is four. Those against are councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Howlett, councillor Congdon, myself, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor McCulloch, councillor Singh and councillor Dovnick. The dissent motion is lost. Please continue councillor Bowman, but please, councillors, we're trying to get through one of the most important meetings of that whole year and please don't make a point of order unless it's a valid point of order. Please continue councillor Bowman.
Fast forward 12 months and what we have is a great first cut service plans. That would be hands down better than the vast majority of other local governments and I thank staff for making this happen. The turnaround from where we were 12 months ago to now is an amazing result. Now all councillors, for example, know what library services is costing, how many staff, any increase in staff numbers, what the project programmes and plans are for the upcoming 12 months and what is the service output. But what I'm even more excited about to see is the second recommendation from staff, which is to publish the 23-24 service plans to the city's website. This is a huge step forward for the city in Swan in being more open and accountable and transparent and I hope all councillors agree that service plans should be published.
Thank you councillor Bowman. Councillor Parry is the seconder.
I agree, it's an improvement, there's no doubt about that. That's why I'm supporting the officer's recommendation, that's all I'll say, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker against, councillor Catalano?
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to argue about the service plans and the format of it. What I'm actually going to argue about is the content. And the corporate business plan on page 14, I'll quote, is a four-year integrated business plan summarising all service delivery, capital works projects and supporting resource information. The information is presented in line with the strategic community plan and that's where I have my problems. The strategic community plan, I think, is deficient and I argued against this earlier when this came to council. I argued for wildlife and nature corridors and I also argued for what I call memory corridors, which is basically a recognition that we have a better heritage provision in the strategic plan. I'm afraid if you have a look at page 30, the services, we've got the built environment, there's no mention of heritage, absolutely no mention of heritage in the built environment, there's no mention of heritage in the social service plan either. We know very well that our communities, particularly in Guildford and Midland, there's Bellevue as well, are extremely concerned about the loss of heritage. In fact, we've had two heritage, we've had a turn of the century building in Midland that's gone down this week and we've also had one of the city of Swan's own buildings, owned by the rate payers, that was actually on the municipal imagery or whatever they call it now, was demolished today. So that's two buildings in Midland. It's really, it leaves the community in a state of grief and they want to protect their heritage. And in fact, if you go to page, if you go to page 40, you'll see that the community, excuse me, thank you, wouldn't mind, trying to talk, thank you, you'll see that the community, when they put out their comments on the local area plan for Midland, promote and protect Midland's heritage was, well, found to be fourth on the list. In fact, it really was first on the list when we had the first consultation round, but it went down to fourth. It's there nevertheless. So we're going to built environment, you can go to page 59 of this corporate business plan and there's no mention about heritage.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, that's factually incorrect. As per page 61, it says local heritage survey review, or review of the city's local heritage survey to ensure all appropriate heritage buildings and structures are provided suitable protection.
Fair enough. But the thing is, that it's headed up.
Councillor Catalano, can I ask you to make your comments relevant? Councillor's already adopted its strategic business plan, you're referring to, sorry, strategic community plan, you're referring to a document that's already been adopted and started being enacted. So if you can keep your comments to the corporate business plan, please.
Well, it's all very well having, it's all very well having a local heritage survey when actually buildings on that survey can be demolished. City-owned buildings can be demolished. So, you know, it's not really anything more than window dressing at the moment because the built environment tab is labelled modern and connected, modern and connected. When we've got heritage buildings in this city, you know, that go right back to the beginning, beginning of European settlement and not only that, we've also got Aboriginal heritage in this, in this city, but it's modern and connected. No, sorry, that's not what the community has asked for in the strategic community plan and this corporate business plan doesn't reflect what the community have asked for. So I won't support it. And don't get me started on wildlife corridors because I've already been down this track. You know, there's just.
You have one minute left, thank you.
Plenty of people out there who think it's time that we actually started to get our nature corridors, our waterways and our whole city reconnected back to nature. So no, I can't support it at all. And the content's just not there. Cheers, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker for the motion? Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just want to talk briefly about service plans. Look, the concept of service plans, service levels and services as a concept was certainly discussed within this council long before October 2021. And I seem to recall that the first draft of the service plans was actually produced by Ms Preckering prior to 2021. I do well recall those early drafts. The current service plans are excellent, they're a vast improvement, they're exactly what we need. We need to know councillors, what services we're providing, what the unit cost of a service is, what the benefit of the service is, how it's provided, is it provided internally, externally, how is it measured, what is the minimum required service, what happens if service is not met? So the service plans don't satisfy all of those objectives, but they're certainly a step in the right direction, as were the service plans we had prior to 2021. Certainly the concept of services and service plans was well-known to me in, back in 2015, it was certainly raised with Mr Foley, I think in my first two years on council. Getting on to, did councillors know the cost, for instance, of libraries, cost of staff, number of FTEs? They certainly did. I think any councillor could easily have found out what the cost of libraries, the cost of staff, number of FTEs was last year, the year before, the year before that, certainly going back to 2015. One of the things I've not seen is the cost of lending an individual book, the cost of individual electronic loans. I don't see that. So the concept of a service is that you account for the individual service, the provision of the individual service on a unit basis. Our service plans don't necessarily go down to that level of detail and that's where we need to go. Why do we need to go to that level of detail, councillors? Because we need to be able to compare the services that we provide, such as the costs of servicing community care, the costs of mowing lawns, the cost of mowing verges, the cost of tree maintenance, so that we can actually say, it costs so much per square metre of verge, so much per square metre of lawn, so much per rosebush. It might be too much detail, councillors, but that's the kind of level you can get to. Then you can compare it with the private sector and decide which way to go, what's the most cost-effective way of delivering a service. Now, I'm not proposing we go down to that level of detail, but the level of detail we have is great, it's better than anything we had before, but I think we can go further and identify an appropriate unit level of service, what the service level should be so that we can compare with the private sector. So it's not a new concept, it's been around for a while, the city's been progressively delivering this and I welcome it and I certainly support publishing the service plans, I think they're excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker against the motion? Any other speakers for or against? Councillor McCulloch?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, our corporate business plan translates those aspirations and the objectives of our strategic community plan. It translates those into our services, operations, projects and details for the process, for delivery and those costs associated. Now, that strategic community plan sets out our council and community's visions, aspirations and strategic objectives over a 10-year period. It was adopted on the 20th of January 21 at our council meeting, following a major review consisting of extensive research and community consultation. We then had a minor review undertaken this year. So as part of all of that, we see our corporate business plan here before us this evening. As councillors have spoken about our service plans and we have seen a thorough, unpacked and transparent process to make those understandable and thus being published on the website, enabling community to further understand our city's operations. So throughout the development of that strategic community plan, we saw extensive community consultation and that has helped us with our corporate business plan and I thank our city staff for the collaborative, consultative and concerted effort in placing this before us this evening to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker against the motion? Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Corporate business plans, any good business should have a business plan and before us we have one that has taken some considerable effort and time to put together. Some of us have fed information back to staff and make slight improvements or even improvements where needed and staff have been very proactive in reviewing those and we see a document before us that our community can look at and our community can say, okay, this is what I'm getting, the value for my rates. That's really what it's all about, is where is the value for their rates? Are they, are we spending it effectively and properly and this explains that. The consultation has been absolutely outstanding. I think the important aspect about that is to filter out the multiple instances that we get of the same argument, to ensure that we get a broad and clear understanding of what the general community wants and I think the balance is in this document to be able to move forward with it. So I'm supporting the corporate business plan, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Speaker against? Any other speakers for or against? Then councillor Bowman, you write a reply, three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, we heard about strategic plans. Mr Mayor, that's not what we're dealing about tonight, we're dealing with the corporate business plan and that's recommendation one. Mr Mayor, I heard from councillor McCulloch about how we've gone out to the community, how we've advertised, we've done that thoroughly. This council has been part of that process. We have had our chance to put in our views, any other ideas like councillor Henderson has said. As with all corporate business plans, it is a statutory requirement of local government, it is not something that's new. However, we're not always going to be 100% happy individually, but is it the right thing for this council? I believe it is. Is it fair for our communities, across all our communities? I believe it is. Mr Mayor, service plans last year were non-existent, we did not get any of that information in the budget and what I've said before, having based my experience on other local governments that have been doing service plans for a few years, the level of detail that we've been provided in a 12-month period is remarkable, it provides us a lot of information and yes, look, there can be always little improvements here and there, as with everything, but I think it's a very good step forward and hence the reason why I'm happy to move these motions.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion, those councillors in favour. I have councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Johnson, councillor Congdon, myself, councillor Parry, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor McCulloch, councillor Richardson, councillor Dovnick and councillor Singh, I make that 12. Those against were councillor Catalano and councillor Howlett. The motion is passed 12 to 2. Thank you. That takes us to next item on the agenda, item 1.2, adoption of the annual budget. Move councillor Parry. I'm looking for a second to councillors. Seconded councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? As in the run sheet, thank you. You wish to speak councillor Catalano? Thank you. Councillor Parry, you have five minutes to open your debate.
I think what we have right now, councillors, is a good budget from five months' worth of work where a lot of communities will benefit from it, from my own local perspective. For the first time, we will have an all abilities playground in Balladura, which was the number one advocacy item in my local area. The Balladura Football Club will get their lighting for AFL, not AFL standard, sorry, WAFL standard football games, will get a pump track in Balladura, will get environmental tree plants, environment being looked after in Arlington Park as well as Hepburn Ave, as well as Down Belfin as well. We've got a lot of work done in Brabham as well as Henley Brook as well. I think this is a great budget for our community and I think we should move forward and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the second councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, as you may recall, at the adoption of last year's budget, my first on this council, I had a lot to say about the budget process as it failed to meet my expectations and standards based on my experience and knowledge of that of other local governments. The standards panel even stated that during the entire budget process councillor Bowman attempted to show more accountability, openness and transparency achieved. They also said that on numerous occasions identified issues at the city of Swan with both budgeting and financial reporting that was significantly different to other local governments. They've indicated that was clear from my speech last year that my emails and questions to the mayor, the CEO, the exec manager of corporate business, that councillor Bowman's expectations and standards for a local government budget is significantly higher than what they provide council have previously done so. They've actually agreed that I did attempt to raise my concerns with how the city of Swan prepares and formulates a budget. The involvement by councillors is minimal compared to the past experience with other like-sized councils and councillors not being fully aware what the budget contained. What councillor Bowman did want to curb was.
Point of order.
What's your point of order councillor Johnson?
The councillor's suggesting that councillors didn't know what was in the budget. And that's not correct because we all had a copy of it and we were all able to read it.
Well, I'm going to rule your point of order out of order. You have. Well, I'm going to rule your point of out, order, out of order. Um, you have no point of order councillor Johnson.
We'll have to, we'll have to, Mr Mayor, I'll have to move a motion dissent from that because that makes no sense at all.
Well, I, I'll give you a reason.
Well, you don't need to. I'll move in a motion of dissent. You need to, you need to watch the video afterwards basically.
Well, I was going to give you a reason to explain, uh, because there were some councillors who weren't aware of what was in the budget last year, councillor Johnson, but you've moved a dissent motion. Is there a second to? Being no second to your dissent motion fails. Please continue councillor Bowman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, what the standards panel did say was that I wanted to, what I wanted to care was a more open and accountable budget, that all councillors are fully aware of what's considered of in the financial implications of the city in the current years and future years. Councillors, the budget process that we have been a part of this year is now one of the best I've seen. And I thank the CEO and the relevant staff for the huge turnaround in the entire budget process. Councillors, you may not agree with everything in the budget and with fifteen different views and opinions, we probably never will. And you may not agree with every capital project. But we've all been provided ample opportunities to ask questions, raise concerns and work with staff. We've been provided a further level of detail than what has previously occurred. We've been provided more explanations. We've had our questions all answered. And I make no apology for coming well prepared to the budget workshops, having always fully read the numerous pages of information provided to us all, having pages of my own notes and having many more queries than anyone else, which were all answered by the CEO or staff.
Sorry, what's your point of order?
There's no way he can verify that comment. I think it's an incorrect comment to make.
Sorry, I was making some other notes. I didn't hear the comment. So uh, can you elaborate on them? So I can, no, I didn't actually. Thank you. The point of order's been withdrawn. Please continue councillor Bowman.
Mr Mayor, councillors, this is a responsible budget and is therefore one that I'm happy to support.
Uh, thank you. Is the second councillor Parry? Oh, sorry, that was the second to. Uh, speaker? Yes, councillor Henderson, you have a question?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, Mr Mayor. Before I maybe enter debate, could the CEO um perhaps give us some guidance and uh, a response on uh in regard to uh the payment of full rates over uh four uh consecutive quarters? Um, do pensioners and seniors within the motion before us uh receive the uh no five percent uh interest?
Mr CEO?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr Mayor and for the question. I'm going to refer you to page one hundred and sixty four, which is uh note two of the rates and service charges uh and E at the top, interest and fees and instalments. In that, it makes clear on the third line down that interest does not apply to current rates due by registered pensioners or seniors.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was actually referring to the recommendation, uh, just to be sure that that's covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for a speaker against the motion? Uh, I think councillor Henderson. Were you satisfied with the answer councillor Henderson?
No, I was just wanting to be sure that the CEO's response, uh, that, that particular part of the document on page one sixty four was covered in the actual recommendation before us because there are sections that deal with concessions and the like.
When you're ready. Thank you, Mr CEO.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. If you actually uh go to the um, the adoption motion itself, uh, you are adopting the statements of comprehensive income, the rate setting statement and all the other components of it. So by adopting those, you're adopting that outcome specifically for pensioners and seniors.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear, uh, Mr Mayor, and perhaps there may, needs to be a notation on that particular page because it's not clear that pensioners and seniors would have, uh, wouldn't have to pay that five percent if they paid on, on time on their quarters.
Perhaps we can include that in our um media statement.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That will also be in the rates, in the budget booklet that goes out with it. Uh, just noting our earlier conversation, councillor Henderson, the, the reason it doesn't, it appears in a different way is that the format for the budget this year uh has been adopted to sit with the Moore Australia uh standard template for all local governments. So the format of the notes are standardized across all local governments.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Speaker against the motion? Councillor Catalano?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, well, I've, I'll just read it out. I have consistently since um the budget and the rates discussion, I've consistently um brought to counsel my opposition to the rates increase and the rates increase is a result of this budget. So therefore I'm opposed to the spending in this budget. And um I've always been uh opposed to that and I'll continue to do so tonight. Um, we've seen that this budget uh results in a three percent increase in rates on top of the GRV uh rates is going to be-
Point of order, Mr Mayor. Four point seven relevance. This is dealing with the budget, not the rate increase, which was last special council meeting.
Yeah, but the rates is dependent on uh the-
Point of order, Mr Mayor. You're the presiding member. I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you. Welcome to have the opportunity of responding. Um, if you can please keep your um comments relevant to the adoption of the budget. Thank you. Councillor Catalano, please continue.
Uh, the spending in this budget uh has an influence on rates. And people are going to find that they're going to be spending more in rates this year, which is on top of the GRV that they're going to experience, the increase in GRVs they're going to experience in suburbs like Ellenbrook, Brigadoon and Averley. So that's the suburbs where we've got the newer families and where the mortgage stress is the greatest. I wanted to see savings in this budget at an operational and capital works um, on, on, on operational and capital works expenditure. Unfortunately, um, I was outvoted at briefing sessions and the spending continues. I'm opposed-
Point of order, councillor Bowman, please.
Incorrect statement. We don't actually vote at briefing sessions, I believe, because that would be against the Local Government Act.
Okay then, I will say that I made-
I uphold your point of order. Thank you. Please continue councillor Catalano.
I made it very clear in uh, at, at, um, the briefing sessions. And I also wrote a very lengthy email uh to the CEO outlining uh what uh the concerns I had about this budget very early in our briefing session process. So, you know, if you don't want to call that an out, being outvoted, I don't know. That's fine. That's just a technical um bit of language there. The fact is, I have made my, my position clear from the beginning. I'm particularly opposed to spending any more money on Midland Oval and I've made that clear as well from the outset of the briefing sessions. And I'm also quite concerned, and I made that clear in my email, about spending any more money uh down at the Midland Recreational um area down there, particularly on those um netball courts that I knew actually very little about and I still don't know an awful lot about. So um, I don't think the, there's been enough options to balance the budget without incurring rate hikes, closing facilities or reducing services. I don't think it's been properly investigated. Well, not to my mind anyway. Uh, I'm not satisfied. I just think this is business as usual. And in these uh financially precocious times, um, I just don't think that the community uh will, will uh be happy and, and I can't support that. And I want to just say one other thing about this budget. Um, you know, I've been on council now for four years and this is the first budget that I've had where I don't have a line by line account of uh capital works carried forward. And we've always had that-
Point of order, Mr Mayor. That's a factually incorrect statement.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if that is factually incorrect, but I haven't seen-
Can I make a ruling, please councillor Catalano? Um, I believe the uh line by item, items are in the um budget papers and the workshops that we've had. And if you weren't satisfied, you could have easily asked questions at the operations manager. So please continue.
Um, I'm talking about the capital works brought forward. I don't remember seeing that. Usually, usually it's brought in a couple of weeks before this meeting tonight because the, the reason why it hasn't been brought in any earlier, as it has been explained to me in previous years, is because we don't know how much of that uh brought forward capital works has to be in this uh included in the next budget. So that's missing. So just wanted to say, um, you know, I'd like to have seen that because there was quite, there's always been quite a few um interesting items in there that I might have missed or that I didn't know about previously or things that had been changed. So, yeah, so that's, uh, that's it for this year. I won't be able to support this uh budget.
Thank you. Councillor Bowman, you have a question?
I, I do, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, councillor Catalano talked about uh we didn't know about the netball courts. I believe it's about two point five million dollars. Uh, can I ask, was that included in the first workshop that we got on capital items? And can I ask, was that also included in the second workshop that we got on capital items? And then can I ask, was it still in there on the third workshop that we had on capital items? Or has it been added after those three workshops?
Uh, Mr CEO or Mr Jekowina?
Uh, thank you. I'm happy to confirm that in each case, those uh, those details are provided, including a, a major, a project brief in each uh brief. And just to be clear for councillors, at the agenda briefing on the twenty first of June, there was a detailed summary provided, which is carried forward works for next year, where it was itemized line by line.
Thank you. Uh, speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any other speak, you speaking against or for councillor? Thank you. Councillor Henderson for the motion?
Uh, councillors, um, what are we talking about? We're talking about-
Budget.
Half, half inflation. I want to talk about um the increase. No council likes to increase rates. Uh, in fact, uh, I think uh highest on the priority list of every rate payer is uh can we do something about our rates? Can you help us? Can you, can you keep our rates low?
Point of order, Mr Mayor. Same thing, relevance. Rates was at the special council meeting. We're talking now about the adoption of the budget.
Yes, thank you. If you can keep on uh line. Thank you councillor Henderson. Please continue.
It's all part of the picture, Mr Mayor, but um thank you for the, the guidance. Want to make a point about the um, uh, what we have proposed in our expenditure then. The, the key thing here is that all of us uh had input to the process. All of us had key programs that we would like to have seen progressed. Uh, and they have all added up uh to uh a gross amount that the city has to raise. Now, simply, part of uh this, this uh budget process to uh approve is two point three million dollars worth of tree planting, driven very actively by councillor Catalano, who's turning around and saying that we should have done better. Well, yes, we do want to grow trees, but there, the point I want to make here is that we've got to have a, a balance. The council has decided that we will in fact go ahead and, and build that program. So the, the, the point is, the rates probably could have been sub two percent, but we decided that we were going to do the right thing and grow two point three million dollars worth of trees. That's in here. So we could argue all day about the, the little bits here and there, uh, the, the four or five million that we needed to save to get to zero again. The point is that all of us finally agreed uh that um we, we had to move forward with a small increase because frankly, what have we got? We've got inflation that's absolutely horrific. We've got um enterprise bargaining agreements that we have with our staff that uh are also suffering through uh tough times. So there's always going to be a um, a break even point and the break even point is where we are. And frankly, uh, I have in the past um voted against um uh the uh adoptions of budgets that councillors may be well aware of in the earlier days. And uh until we did get serious about cutting our costs and we've done that very effectively, I think, we've actually pulled together three years and no, no uh revenue increases. And what we're talking about here is um a very, very um, I think balanced and worked out path forward so that our rate payers can have what they expect from us. That's well maintained. Uh, parks, gardens, roads, uh, all of the things that they expect. Uh, and I'm uh going to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Henderson. Any other speakers for or against the motion? Being no other speakers, you will write a reply. Thank you councillor Parry. You have three minutes.
So carry forward amounts, operations centre, fifteen grand, environmental lock and key, renewal plan, two fifty K, citywide security management system, two fifty K, Midland Library, a hundred K, Swan, Swan Park, leisure centre, a hundred K. All pages, a hundred and fifty one, a hundred and fifty four clearly show the carried forward amounts of the projects that we have this year. Thirty million bucks, give or take in regards to it. It's clearly in the briefing sessions. If you don't bother to read the briefing sessions, don't take it out on the, on the budget. I think it's completely unfair and honestly. And also, let's talk about cost saving measures, shall we councillors? When I hear certain councillors say, I've tried to reduce costs, but then somehow put a three point nine million dollar worth of steam weeding in regards to it, rather than using the other measures that we have, that's very hypocritical too, isn't it councillors? I find that quite ironic that that comment was made, but hey, we're willing to spend three point nine million dollars on steam weed.
Point of order, using the word hypocritical. It's detrimental to council. We don't know who's talking about.
I'll change that. I'll withdraw that. I find it ironic that they use that.
Please continue councillor.
I find it ironic that councillors sometimes say, we wanted to save money, but it's seen month by month, month by month, month by month, month by month. They want to increase spending profile. You know, we had to see this all the time throughout the year. This budget is a good budget. It's a consistent budget as well. It fits our community requirements and what they have asked for. And we will, and I reckon it's worthwhile to put this budget for because everybody wins out of this budget, in my opinion. Kids get their parks upgraded, clubs get their lighting sports, environment, more trees are put up for natural environment, et cetera. We have to move forward as part of the budget council, so let's put it to a vote.
Thank you. I now put the uh motion to the vote. Those in favour, I have councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Johnson, councillor Congdon, myself, councillor Parry, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor um McCulloch, councillor Singh, councillor Podovnik, councillor Richardson. I make that twelve. Those against were councillor Howlett and councillor Catalano. The motion is passed. Thank you. Uh, that completes all items on the agenda. Councillors, I thank you for your attendance and declare this special meeting closed at seven fifty six PM. Thank you.